First of all, quickly thank the DPA to listen to the board for paying attention. As Mr. Blazer said yesterday night, last night, and I don't want to reiterate it, it's been impressive. The participation by the county board is only one of the deals. My zelle is Mr. Blazer, so I'll just be agree with what he says. It may be the only time I do what he says tonight, but we'll go for it. There were nights when I drove home wishing I could have handled certain things better this year. I want to apologize for those times when I could not contain my passion for this issue that was unacceptable. And I apologize to the board, Mr. Cornell, and the department. We heard a lot about fear intimidation last night, and lots of people being demonstrated. Good people came there to be done, but tell you what they did. Afterwards, these two of my clients came up to me and said, "Phil, please don't do that." That's what I'm like, "You're welcome." From the beginning, I had to admit, I kind of love this community and these people. Every night they just remain. They were also angry last night at some other things, or showing up meetings, and the way they're expressing their opinion somehow was leading into turn- turned into fear intimidation. However, they still said it, and Phil, don't go there. So I'm going to do my best to look through all the elements that are issued here in a way that's fair and focuses on the evidence before you. Let's be clear one bit. The burden of proof here is on the applicant. It's not on the client. Your law is very, very clear that the burden of proof under the law is on the applicant. I can cite case law etc. mainly, but I think that's, no one's mistook that, and that's a process we've been using. In this case, the applicant has failed to meet his burden with regard to many respects which we will discuss. I'm not going to read these standards, you have them in front of you, they're up here. I'm not going to waste time to reread them, you have them in front of you. But let me just say, as the standard, what I've been pretty much advised, if whatever is here, it meets the standard. So to me, it's not ex- lap standard, we're not going to talk about very long. Standard two, the requirements set forth in the district and the section for such special use will be met. This is probably the most important section. If they don't read the standards, the requirements of the section, you have to go no. There is no other way to vote. Besides that, it applied to special use standards in zoning ordinance, the applicant is required to comply with the wind energy ordinance provisions of the zoning ordinance. And it's failed to meet that burden on a number of points. One of the things that Tom, Mr. Blazer, was handing out is the post-finance effects. I don't make it presumptuous, but I wanted you to know where we stood on these issues now. I will tell you though, when I was reading through it, driving down here tonight, I realized, one of the most important issues is the first issue I'm going to talk about, and I forgot to put it in. So I know a couple of times right now. One of the things that they need to provide is financial assistance. The applicant pleasant, so that they can develop the property is the post. The applicant pleasant bridge relies on two things from this man's insurance. One, the co-bank letter, which we'll discuss more in a moment, and two, the Ventergy's equity. Let's look at Ventergy's 2.8 billion equity in America. Remember, it's equity, it's not cash. We have unfortunately seen many companies in this country, including the Chicago area, they all thought were too big to go on, go bankrupt. Or what happened? We've seen those companies go bankrupt, or what happened? The feds wouldn't have bailed him off. I can think of a few off the top of my head, Big Three Auto, banking industry, huge companies, United Airlines, Harper Anderson, American Airlines, some of which are Chicago-based companies that we all know so well. They went for bankruptcy protection. I'd much rather have, I'd much rather feel comfortable with United Airlines at one time in the 1990s than I would with Ventergy. But they still bought the bankers. All companies with billions and billions of dollars went back to the under Ventergy. Second, Ventergy's not the applicant, let's not forget that. Pleasant Ridge is the applicant. A single entity LLC with no known other assets other than this project. It's not like Ventergy is a guarantor of these obligations. I haven't heard it suggest that. In fact, the opposite is true. That's why we set up a single LLC, single entity LLC. So they didn't have the guarantor be guaranteed. They could walk away from it if they want. Ventergy is worth 2.8 billion dollars. Attaining a letter of credit for the required amounts should be easy. Examples of financial assurance in your ordinance include security bond, trust data with cash, escrow, or irrevocable letter of credit. Just the same thing she would use when you had a development. You have a development, you require those exact same things, so that if public improvements are not done, you can call the letter of credit. It's straight from the book. Don't let them walk away from that requirement. Now, and they shouldn't be, let's talk about the co-bank letter, and go save very good for where you are. But Ventergy's actually should not talk under any of these categories, I just mentioned. All these types of financial insurance are alive, and we call upon the project as that. Parts of the unit admitted that this is such a mis- misstatement. Only a single hearsay letter from a bank said that while they had not formally reviewed this project, they would quote, "Expect to be interested." In fact, the letter goes on to say, "It is not a commitment, not a commitment to provide financing. And any commitment would be contingent upon the satisfactory completion of diligence and internal credit reports." This isn't clearly the type of irrevocable assurances that the ordinance is, and you should be aware of. For this failure alone, the application must be denied. Talked about, I filed, I've had motions dismissed a couple of times on incomplete application, this application is still incomplete, I'm not going to, we can go through that again. But we still do not have financial assurance, and as Patrick pointed out, we don't have it right where we're starting. Still, to this day, section 620, sorry, says, "Need to show that it applies with the only permission control board regulations." This is the most interesting part to me. The most that was said about this topic was, we all know I ran and James did that show, applying something sinister. He's right, we all do know. With James and Art Brown, couldn't leave, couldn't leave. Mr. Rand was born in fear due to the intimidation, the threats that would occur to my witnesses. I heard about fear of intimidation last night, I didn't hear about any fear, threats to anybody else who was involved in our office. Closing on last night, I also spent a lot of time on Pleasant Bridge at 3:25, I would say the present noise guidelines are sufficient to correct type people. Problem is that here, the applicant failed, has failed catastrophic to show that they meet these current zoning regulations. Well, we heard a lot about dissipation of noise from outside inside, which is not an issue in the only permission control board, and you won't find it. But it exists, they have to show it to you. The applicant's closing, they're living nowhere to avoid the biggest issue of this year. One the board has continually picked up on over the last month or so, and the one that you appear to be seeing the most answers on, is still the term of company manager. And despite that, Ventergy ignored those letters. What is trying to give you the answers to this issue, and hopefully a clearance to say to me. We have prepared a memorandum of law regarding what is the issue that Mr. Blazer was handing out. That sets forth the law in this year. You can also listen to Mr. Hanker's cross-examination last night and hear the law. I'll go through it fairly quickly tonight, with the paradox in front of you, you have the case law, you have the permission control board regulations, you have your opinions. That's the law, not what Mr. Hanker somehow wants it to be. Many of the properties which will receive winter by noise specification by Class A properties. The actual use of property determines the classification of the land, not the zoning classification. You can pardon, you can use your anger to admit it, because every property in this town, when a corporate owner leaves, is zone air. So it's not, the IPCC rights are clear, it's not zone, it's used. And then they put out a opinion in 1973 that says, "The portion of land used as farm land will be classified as C." And they'll agree, they all know it, used, that is C, while the farmstead itself will be classified as an A use. The farmstead itself, it's not the farmhouse, it's the farmstead. Mr. Hanker said last night, in all studies he had seen for wind farms, called everything but the home itself a Class A property. That's not the register. He said that's what he had seen in wind farm test. Doesn't make it the law just because people like Ventergy and Mr. Hanker come in and that's what they can say and say and say and open. It's not the law. The applicant must show that the noise does not exceed the Class A limit for the entire Class A portion of the property. Section 901.102, the regs governing sound emission standards, page 114, couple different places, shall not allow the emission of sound, and I'm kind of skipping, some language in between is not important, to any receiving Class A land. Doesn't say Class A structure, Class A land, when measured at any point within, versus such receiving Class A land. The regulation defines property line noise source as must be capable of emitting sound beyond the property line. Property line. 90, 102105, site selection, "Most of which must be taken at one or more microphone positions within the appropriate receiving land." You don't take it in the building, you take it at the land, that's what the question, that's what the ordinance, as the regs say. Measurement instruments must be at least not 25 feet, must be, must be set up not less than 25 feet in the property line of the source. I know we had some issues about that, I know, one of the word numbers, at least a couple of word numbers, you're trying to understand that. What it means is, if the noise source goes to the property line from the admitting land, you've got to go back and restore it. That's what the register, that's what it says. If not, you go to property line. If this is the exception to the property line issue. If the noise source is at the property line, let's say we have a road, where somebody else is heard it directly on the property line, then you have to give them 25 feet. That's what the register said, that's what that 25 feet goes by, it says. It is important to note, when looking at all given only permission control board regulations and patents, that despite this man's unsupported opinion that the structure is irrelevant point in which the model measure, at no time do the regs and patents mention the word "structure" or "building" when discussing property locations and measure noise issue. And we'll talk about that in one second. The only permission control board's decision is to confirm the measurements at or near the property line are proper, and that the entire receiving Class A land is protected from excessive noise in roading, which the full site is in the name of. The county expert took measurements on the receiving Class A land in distances of 10 and 15 feet from the property line, separated receiving land and admitting land. That was found to be property. In Charter Hall, that is in the name of. Measurements were not taken at the residence, and the IPCD expressly found that the measurement locations were proper. Roading and Charter Hall established, as Mr. Hanker simply wrong, when he says proxy measurement location on Class A receiving land is at the residence. And you have not heard one case, one IPCD reg that says it's the residence. To the contrary, because the regulation permit emission of excessive noise in entirety of the receiving Class A land, the center of the residence is a very poor and inaccurate location. If one wants to hear property measure in the noise received at the land, instead of the relation, you model on the modern Class A and the energy of the property line. There could be no doubt that, when we look at the facts, talk about it in one second, that has fatal show, that thousand hertz, they are not above 41.0 with that. No doubt. I'm going to have to read this a little bit, and I apologize because it's too small, the screen is too small. This is from Mr. Hanker's cross-examination. "You're not denying, are you, question, that at the 41 decimal measure, maximum level, you discussed, there are places where those turbines may have over 41 decimals at the property line? You wouldn't deny that, would you? Answer, having done a ton of predictions of property lines, if they're significantly close to turbines, then yes, the levels are going to be lower." Okay, so we've got houses 500 feet back from my property line, and I was at 41 decimals. There's a good chance that I may be more than 41 decimals at the property, correct? Answer, if you're closer to the turbine, then there's certainly a chance you're going to be over 41. If that, question, if that's 500 feet closer. Question, the property line is, the property, when you say closer, you mean if the property line is closer, correct? Answer, yes. Let's get moving on. It's also true that under the order under the proposal, the turbines then move 250 feet in any direction. Answer, I'm not aware of that, okay. Okay, if the turbine was moved 250 feet closer to a residence, would that change your analysis? Could that change one of those six receptors to be more than 41 decimals? 20, answer, 2500, 250 feet is a minor change, and that could cause levels to increase if you're getting in closer. Moving the turbines 250 feet closer to a residence, yes, there's going to be some increase there. There's no hope provided, they got all the tests that said 41.0. We'll talk about the numbers in a second. Okay. The next thing is the land-based control, or land-based classification system. First page you have is the coverage page. As you'll see on this table, you can see better, it's hard to read here. The land-based classification system, that's where we get this Class A land, and Class B, and Class C, that's where they define us, okay? And they use the land, they use an earlier section, and it sets forth land. It's land-based classification. However, if you go down to what is the section here, it's structures. Now, when the only permission control board took a section of the land-based classification system, they took a land, land analysis. They didn't take a structure analysis, you will see, they did not take this analysis. They took the earlier chart from this land-based classification system and made that exhibit B to the regs. That chart is land, it's not structure. They wanted structure, they could have done it. They did, that tells you everything you need to know. Their failure, the IPCD's failure to make this standard speaks values about the permission control boards. Okay, we all saw Mr. Slager's files. These confirmed Hanker's numbers within 100 of the decimals. So we did the exact same ISOM outline, and he ran, came up with the exact same numbers that Mr. Hanker came up with. Were not suited, Mr. Hanker's numbers on the ISOM. He ran, we confirm. Interesting thing is, where do these lines show? These are contour measures, and we heard all, they're not accurate as decimals. Well, they may not be as accurate as decimals at one point, but when you're talking every foot and a half, they give you a much better perception of what actually is occurring. So let's look at receptor 313. Clearly, at 41.0, the middle of the house is not, it's not a 41. The red's the 41, and it is less than 41, oh my god. This is one that's the 41.0. The middle of the house is not 41, but a portion of the house is, not to mention the land. Half this property is over 41. And you're going to tell me they met the standards? They failed miserably. Let's look at the next one, receptor 216. Again, we have a portion of the house, the middle's not in, point of use is not in, but a portion of the house is clearly 41.0. And we have land that is 41.0. This is farmland, this is residential land. And we'll talk about that in one second, well. Next one, 241. Now, we have a third of the house that's at 41.0. And a heck of a lot of land. Receptor 438, half the house, 41.0. And above, red is 41.1. Half the house. Now, we heard Mr. Hanker say, "Well, but I know these numbers are high because I did Cowbridge, I measured at Cowbridge." Cowbridge is a company. They weren't measured at property line, they were at a point chosen somewhere that we don't know here, to somehow, quote, I think it was, he's similar to, or duplicate. We heard Mr. Hanker's thinking process about the regulations, you know, we're going to say, we're going to trust his judgment about where he put this? Where do you put these measuring tools? He also clearly, you know, doesn't understand the regs and doesn't care. Because if you look at this example here, this is something like ordered in the cross-examination. He said on a number of patients, "One, I didn't, wasn't there for the entire, noise now for the entire, noise analysis was going on, and the testing was going on, I went out there every hour, often, checking to make sure they're running etc." Said it, no doubt about it, admitted it, then said, "But I still complied with all the IPCD regulations and amros and letters, and you know what? Because I am lying." Let's read Charter Hall ordinance association, which I read to him, he expressed the hand motion. "Respond to legislation of three-year agreement, Mr. Harmon failed to comply with certain measurement procedures. Part 951 requires the homeowner thinks that the perky person taking sound measurements be present while measurements are being taken. Mr. Harmon left the site while the measurements were being taken, exactly like Mr. Hanker did. Accordingly, he did not comply with this provision of section of part 951, and they threw out his opinion." Threw it out! That's exactly what you have to do. He didn't comply with the IPCD rights, that's his job. We also look at, again, this gets real small, and I apologize, me and PowerPoint none of them. The patents, I did, my daughter can help us with, we do that really well. Okay, these are the two charts, this one and the next one that you have in front of you, that Mr. Hanker's talking about, and I just wanted to point out, because I know there's some questions. Same day, one time, the highlight one, in table 71, he comes up with 41.5. Same day, same time, next chart, 7-5, comes up with 41.0. Then we go on to his conclusions of his report. And this is right on the table, this is page 43 of this report on Cowbridge. "We are 95% confident that there are two one-hour measurements, if they attempt to withhold their impact, that will be within four decimals of one another. And then each will be within four decimals of the true value. And above he says, expanded uncertainty at thousand hertz is 4.2 decimals." That is, for example, with four decimal expanded uncertainty, one can be 95% certain of a measurement of 47 decimals, for examples, of 243 and 51. So we heard say he had measurements, Mr. Hanker, that he said were akin to one of Hartman's houses at 39. Pleasant Ridge, 4, so it's either 35 or 43, we don't know. He doesn't know, his own report says he doesn't know. Next page is the report. "In summary, no turbines only noise levels exceed the limits, and the average of the turbine-only noise measured with turbine operations were 39 decimals in 1,000." That's average, that's not the issue. The measurements that are not based on the average is. Patrick, the answer that I got was very, very interesting. Says 0.6 difference between receptor and 100 feet from the house. Close percentage of 16B shows numbers over 40.5 decimals at thousand hertz. If we use 100 meter blades, this is the LNT, after they tried to fix it, after Mr. Griffin pointed out, a real problem. You add that 0.6, we have 37 properties originally 40.5 below. Adding that 0.6, now this is just 100 feet away, not 400 or 500 feet away, like some of the houses we heard about. We had the property, 100 feet away. We have 37 properties at 41.1 and above. Five of those are at 41.6, you guys were wrong by Mr. Hanker, you got around to 42. And I like wrong by 41.5, because I forgot the number, but I think he was rounding up at 41.5. So we got more than that. Because we used 100 feet meter blades, the calculation showed 34 receptors at 41.1 below, and five of which are at 41.6. Let's talk about Mr. Keisner's, and I apologize, when she read before that, that's the 0.6 that Patrick was talking about, I had nothing to look at. It goes from 34.9, it goes from 37.9, I can't read them, I can't figure it. Every one of them goes up 0.6. From turbines, without LNT blades, turbines 100 feet closer to LNT blades, turbines with LNT blades, 100 feet closer. Every one of them goes up 0.6. He's got five different companies, five different testers, they all go up 0.6. Admit that, read to it, can be no doubt about it. That's the county's expert. Let's talk about Matt and Keisner's house. This is kind of irritable. Receptor 394, 4.7 acres, all residential, all residential. Now, this is farming, no commercial use, doesn't have ample shot in there, like we saw on Monax State. You have a straight house, and property that includes a Hispanic, with a Hispanic name. Clearly Class A land. Any state you're headed, last night by Mr. Hanker, this surrounding area with farm land is irrelevant to this type of property. Wife, four children, on the way, 40.6 decimals with a new LNT blade at thousand hertz. Six winter machines in the land. This is two things. The one on the left is Mr. Slager's original compilation, which he admitted were incorrect, because he didn't have the right numbers. He didn't have the 16B. The one on the right is with 16B, the new LNT blades, actually, I should say, the one that's incorrect, it's actually the person numbers, that's the actual application, it's still before us. But I don't know if to revise the application or not, but the one on the right still shows that we have significant property line, that significant property beyond the property line, that is over 41.1. Let's go to Dr. Slager's house. Receptor 241. This one was 41.0 decimals at 1,000 hertz with new 100 meter LNT blades. Three acres, again, not farming. She uses a Class A register, with the exception of one shed, the far west of the machine, that far west. So I would, I would admit that that part, that part of land, in the southwest of that, may be Class A. Doesn't matter, because everything else, second, including his house, and it's over 41.1. That is probably, I mean, that's another 400 or 500 feet, by the end of his property line, it's probably 2, probably over 42. If one puts a someone in 100 acre farm, there's 95 acres of farm, and they're going to three yards, then ninety-five acres would involve three A's class A. Under this same example, the other five acres, which the building's been counted by resident mowers, has a family house on it, family kids, dogs play on it, that being considered class A. Or we could have a piece of property that's just five acres, and like the Paesner's. It's a family home, same scenario, they mow it, kids play, dogs play, either way, we have five acres, two hundred seventeen thousand acres per acre. While there are many permutations, one way to divide that five acres would be to have it's more, it's more than one, and that would be just one thousand eighty-nine feet of depth. Under that scenario, if this Livingston County resident places his home in the back of the lot, he could have nine hundred feet of class A land between his house and property line. Nine hundred feet, uh, five-acre parcel. It's not my job to show that there are, not by emissions, of the only emission control regs, even though we have, it's their job to show there are none. That's their burden, back to the burden, it's their burden. So, we can have a property line nine hundred feet closer to the apartment. Then we have the vacuum application, the wind turbines, can they, with discretion, add up to two hundred fifty feet closer? Oh, my gosh, we now have twelve hundred fifty feet. I can buy one hundred fifty feet, I can't do that. Then Hager, again, there's a point-three decimal, just looking at fifty feet in the middle of the house dash. Would it be the type of yard I just described? On top of that, we have issues that Hager admitted regarding margins there, that he did not place in the model. I S O model was best, plus or minus three decimals, manufacturing uncertainty, another two decimals. These are all things he admitted. I'm not, he's already been mine, too, because I didn't get it, I didn't need it. Confirms land, and three plus two confirms, we heard from Alan Husco in his court testimony in Wisconsin, which he should use, use at least a five decimal margin there, when using the I S O model. Then we still have the problem, that the model has been seen as great uncertain at over three hundred meters, at over thirty meters in height. Well, this turbine is well over thirty meters in height. As I said, as the evidence is proven, so, there's only one way to explain this, and show the work of the I B C D regs, but yeah, this is true. This project completely horrifically fails to ensure compliance with the regs, and must be denied on that basis alone. If we did not have counsel, testified, or had not, had the ability to run this model by one of your residents, then we're happy. But he tested the model, proved it was right, but he gave us the further information, and I thank him for that, and I think we all should. Pre-construction load survey, I'll be real quick, Patrick brought this up, and I missed it, honestly. Mr. Blazer said, "Oh, that does not matter," because it's pre-construction. However, that's not true. That's a requirement of the ordinance, they did do that. The ordinance says, "That's part of the application," doesn't say a year later, you gotta do it at the time, and they missed it. That basis alone, it should fail. De-commissioning plan completely underestimated. And I'll be fairly quick, because I don't think we can get to that, because it only diverged, so there's no value in that, I'll try and get to it. No idea about the cost to pull off and load the C A six, that was Mr. Ralphman, don't know the cost of handling, ton of perks on handling this for C A six, did not know hand user for C A six, or tip fees cost, did not know the value of C A six clean or dirt, I heard it's a deal with him last night. Do not know the cost of bag of materials, whether the layer blacked or, do not know hours of manpower, do not know cost to rent a car, I'm praying, do not know size of cut pieces or hours a day, don't know where to take the pieces, do not know hours of labor, cost of strip to cover of turbine. Never asked about the contractor, or even not know the contractor. On the other hand, those there called contractors that Mr. Blazer mentioned is doing with farm construction, estimator did not believe that the cost he gave, than what Ralphman said, would be enough. Estimator said would be between a hundred fifty to a hundred thousand dollars per turbine. Couple were psyched, they said we're not paid a dollar sixty for a ton of copper, well, well, Ralphman's two sixty. Don't you want to be in the business with people who tell you the truth? They may accord you now, but once they're here, there's no more accord. They're your partners, and you can't give them. Mr. Hyden's testimony last night, we all agree, was in some way very light, in some way not so. Now, his decommissioning testimony is a little boat, because he obviously was not very versed in what Patrick Engineering did, and here's what we learn for sure. Original Patrick Engineering cost was eight-point-six million, originally was higher by about three-point-two million, but asked for some reason to take out half the accessory. I do know that if you really want to protect the community, which I know every one of this board, and how many more has decided to, you don't take out three-point-two million dollars, the actual decommission cost, because you maybe wrote to base it in. wrote that you can take it out, and then put it back, and use for farm land, which is what ninety percent of the people in this company make a point of. I should say, I don't know the percent, I forgot. So, now, we're at one point, we also saw Patrick Engineering mistakenly, and I think it was not his mistake, I don't think it was a wall-based line. Hand salvage costs, it was nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand too high, because they envisioned them to study these ones. As I said, now, it's a mistake, but now, we're at four-point-seven. That's before the other issues that are out there right now, that we don't know about, that we're not, drain time, pressure, crime laws, but Patrick, unfortunately, did not tell the blame force. However, we had usage costs, we heard, oh, we had one, two, nine, thirteen, fourteen million. Patrick, four-point-seven, without missing the cost, right above, almost exactly. Then we have Ralphman of five. Unfortunately, we're not able to get a bottom couple of their issue, such as labor rates and the thirty-eight percent calculation, given the fact that this is a hugely labor-intensive job, and general conditions, which is way to do the same margin by any more teams, is according to Mr. Hager, somewhere below five percent. I have to be honest with you, there are a lot of instruction companies, knowing that thirty-eight percent, no, just because you do the job more than. Either way, P I, Patrick Engineering's numbers are a lot closer to Houston's numbers than they are in age and ask and commission by the advocate. Further, Mr. Houston went out and called Patrick. What's the cost? Twenty-five million. He didn't come, he didn't give you that number, he didn't say that was his number. He said four-two million. He was starting to be honest, he didn't go try and fear-monger, and tell you it was twenty-five. He tried to hear you, and understood the number, fourteen million. Let me just say, I'd rather be safe than sorry. As I said, this is a missile lawyer, these enemies are staying on the L C's, they have nothing behind them, no guarantees, I would think, did fourteen million, any financial assurance is the least they should provide. And let's talk about the financial insurance we're talking about. They don't give you the financial insurance that's required under decommission orders. It's not the security, it's the same financial definition we talked about earlier, it's not the security by trust, it's the cash, yes, for your local credit, whatever credit. They really only want to provide you on a face-to-face basis. That's not what's allowed under orders. If for some reason, God forbid, you do grant this, make sure you require fourteen million upfront, in cash, your local credit, something, if you can go after. Birds, part of this, again, section six twenty-one, we heard about limitations, we used the decimal, bird surveys, literature quickly outrates the problems, and offers solutions for him, for them, which they obviously ignored, and just didn't do anything. Presented, they presented little to most scientific evidence, and suggested that your wind farms would have no effect on local habitat systems, especially wildlife. In fact, literature suggested it's possible effects on wildlife, and that additional researchers strongly recommended it. The most important thing that I thought they mentioned was, they completely had little regard for the majority of the Illinois department of natural resources' recommendations. We heard the significant amount of enforcement importance on wildlife provides for coming, which the I D N R's are protecting some of the regulations, the land can, however, whether nor these thoughts by the I D N R, can decide where it's best for the people and the state of mind. People lose the company's state of mind themselves. Don't let them do that. Don't let them do that. Standard, three acres. First part, to assure any development and construction wing generator, if let just be included, becoming safe, we can hear a lot of testimony about, what we didn't hear is that there were seven catastrophic blade bridges in six years, five crashes. Catastrophic, that was, that was their word, not mine. Not to mention the public elevation, we'll discuss in a few moments. It's also to facilitate economic opportunities for local residents. It promotes economic opportunities for only about thirty-nine percent of the property owners. And of those thirty-nine percent, only two-thirds of them actually are Livingston County residents. Not a lot of economic opportunity for Livingston County residents, when the numbers are that small for such a big project. Thousands and thousands of acres. We heard about half a percent, that's the land, the land turbine, the wind turbine are on, the footprints, I can't remember, thirty-two thousand to sixty-four thousand, a huge number, huge, I can't even contemplate that area. But I'm not, I'm not a farm dad in the city, so. Okay, that kind of came in. No one knows if there are no people in Livingston County U B halls, even through the work. Harson didn't know, Lucas didn't know, local one-fifty workers that we heard, come from that area. Damn, well, Mr. Dad, hard work, you got it, I hope you're everywhere you see. Living Island, Trent, Daley, and Lena Bureau, before we're going to talk. So, people from those two towns, did they stay there all night, did they eat there? No, you heard, you heard what he said. Home every night, went there every day, brought my lunch, that adds a lot of, you know, get back to your job. Not using local concrete plants, why not? I don't know, when it's not adding any economic activity, you're not freezing, you're telling you, again, to bring in our temporary base plant. You know, we heard a lot about the pro-age, anti-age, anti-society, all those things, don't want to win lunch, I don't want any tomorrow, I'm the absolute. But we also know that their experts are wrong. Lucas runs a parkour school that gets people employed by the wind industry. You don't get a job if they're not employing those people. All percentage of the project materials in this Jedi model can, only for revenge, did not even double check with anyone. There's no turbine manufacturing and everything coming. The jobs discussed with girls, wasn't that? Not in the detail, Livingston County can justify the numbers. Lucas had no idea what small percentage of persistent in rock land, which actually would die from Livingston County. Never actually tested the Jedi model, not once, even though we have other wind farms, Livingston County, otherwise, if he's trying to this Jedi model other places, did he ever test it, to see what the actual effect was, how accurate it was? Not once. Not once, and he works for the wind companies, he has all the data available to him, didn't buy it, underwired. Then we heard, Mr. Gruberman, she does this. Develop, increase the demand of public service, but associate cost for that, need advice from us. This rule just doesn't discuss it, include changes to property values, employment, and this, even though it is less than, employment effect is less than one percent. We sell ourselves for one percent for six months. This area unfortunately is missing many, it probably forces it, I should say, it's missing many of the types of dynamic sectors that would need to get the type of multipliers everyone's prepared. Ninety percent of the Jedi model for wind projects, equipment and materials, ultimately should have to be in order. We heard the stone cores won't even bid this project. The Livingston County stone cores won't bid. Third standard is to promote supply of wind energy under three priorities, to promote supply of wind energy that's affordable, increasing energy production from normal sources. Obviously, it does this, it's set up, it has to. Three double, Roman, two, my teacher wants to open it. Many people would testify, worry about the use of these, they do not want to try and pollute their life, you know, where I live, no one would honestly be too worried about that. But, we probably wouldn't allow wind turbines either. And there are. However, here, I think it is a value that's really important to the community, the type of community you pay. And it's nobody, we'll talk about that in a minute. Let's talk about some of the people who talked about how these things have affected that, people who have, who live in this. Martin Stuck, constantly low frequency noise was sleeping in bed, wake up, so warm, sometimes it can't get away from it, it penetrates bathroom doors in the middle of the house, pillow over the head, you know. Sounds like the Arty family, that's like a four-letter word, I guess, but. It penetrates the body and causes sleep deprivation, even over family. Sham Roberts, goes a mile and a quarter, mile and a half away, she's like the boss. Jesus. Seven thousand feet? I'm talking sixteen hundred from here. She hears the generator of the blades, has been paying on his routine for two years. My house, that would give me shit. Property values. We don't need a property value guarantee agreement, there shouldn't be one, because the burden has been met, and I'm talking about this property value guarantee agreement there, did you? First of all, it's mutually exclusive, they never agree, no idea how long they're going to be sidelined, so two weeks, two years, two years after a verbal litigation or something, half miles, right, there's no evidence of that. It's just a random number to figure out. Let's talk about the blue day. All praisers are based on the order day, no credit for approval may have been signed, penetrate or do the increases in property values, in non-intimate turbine personnel. Energy chooses the first appraisal. From the listing, the praiser, they are pretty improved. The praiser's no base, they're all, they want to, and they want to be hired, right? They don't want to be a one-and-done, they come in and say, "Okay, I know, if I get the right number, I'm gonna hire you again." That first number is also the most important number, because it continues to average it, every other appraisal down this process, no matter how ridiculous the law may be. So, if I have a heavy doghouse, and they appraise me two hundred thousand, that two hundred thousand is stayed on throughout the process. Everything else gets averaged with that. Property owner, owner doesn't like the number one appraisal, then he pays the second appraisal. He pays one. And then, they average it. In the end, if the offer purchase is lower than the asking price, they average it, and then the third appraisal, if they don't agree, they average, and then the first appraisal. In the end, if the offer purchase is lower than the asking price, which is, I'm about, then in energy, it's immediate. Property owners, which is immediate, in energy does, not reciprocal. If no offer received, then no appointment by the applicant to buy the property, stuck living there, or abandoned the home, or they can lower the price, hope the applicant does not force them to mediate. That's a whole disagreement. All intended, drive across, offer, go through the process, and make it not worth it. Remember, these ones are often worth a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. All the experts on both sides say what you want them to say anyway, but it's important what they say. First, we know this is a fair, it's a winner. No guarantee, property value is not going down, didn't comply with USP, the only person who prepared USP before was me. Didn't inspect, didn't cite homes, neither did Mr. Camp, but Mr. Roos wanted to blame Mr. Camp for it, didn't want to talk about Mr. Taylor. Bags, we know, do not use hedonistic values for providing packages. This is nothing but a. The L B N O study says, quote, "The average value of these homes could be as much as nine percent higher than when families have prices of wind turbines." As much as nine percent lower, the same I E zero factor anywhere between. We don't know if it's nine percent, eight percent, seven percent lower, we have no idea, that's what the study says. Besides all the other faults in this black box that we're talking about, one looked at less than a hundred homes with extremely substantial use, we don't know how many of those are receiving wind payments in the wind turbine area. Did not look at time on market, or those people who could not sell their homes. And they looked at, and I don't want to go through many, I did cross, and you saw Miss Emerson's areas. There's not more of those areas that they looked at, it had the height of the tournaments we're talking about, had the closeness, had the number. There are many more areas, that are much more world than you have there. Despite not having the same intensity for the results. This is, Mr. Kans. I wanted to say, we said it to somebody else, because we're going to get to that, man. This is the average sensitivity and sales prices that we keep on it. For business, negative four percent, for low average business, negative eight percent. Real estate damage, analysis of detrimental conditions, just the same, from a treaty that everybody, that committed to society. Recognize, that is applying detrimental condition sales comparison approach, includes the use of sale, resale analysis, or repair exam analysis, only one also is not, Mr. Jones. Correction, studies, hedonistic, not by over-damn justice, per I A A O's, I A A O's standard of liability is point nine zero. What's the standard of liability for the L B N O study? Point six, seven. Kind of close to what's necessary to give you property values that makes sense, or analysis that makes sense. We have Mr. Kans, for itself, an analysis, we heard about. We have Mr. Cam's fairytale analysis, and we heard about how often he is with a wall face flyer, and we've heard you all who've been. Not much is true of LBNL. We saw the N S plain four point six eight percent, and we heard that there were all these areas in the study. We also know there are all kinds of areas in the study, I spent an hour on that person, but. We're going to keep going forever, it seems like we already have. This study in front of you is not in evidence. It is not going to be in evidence, it isn't demonstrative. We went through Mr. Blazer's states that he found, allegedly found in the study. The first night across the land in the bracket of states, you know, he used one point seven figures or one point nine. Didn't have certain classifications correct. And for a moment, he gave the benefit of the doubt. Would it change the study? Would it change the numbers? It changed them. From two point, twenty-four point six eight to twenty-three point five percent. One point one percent. All that hour and a half he did it, one point one percent. Mr. Blazer called Mr. Cam a wall face flyer. He made perjury, pre-storm charges, he didn't have any soundless conclusions. Primarily basis, the Senate chart, which is what Cam's powerful, and freely admitted was a compilation of data from the NPAC study that he created. Thank you, never said it wasn't, in fact, it's the one, it's just the introduction by yourself. It's a single sheet. I didn't print the PowerPoint, PowerPoint's done today before. And as I said, my daughter was in the middle. In fact, it says, NPAC study data, doesn't say it was the number forty-five. If this is version, oh my goodness. Where are we coming to with these types of allegations that are thrown about to make money? Mr. Steiner said, Lexington County Air Chong Drive twenty-four and twenty-fourteen dropped two percent. On the other hand, Odell dropped twenty-five point eight three percent. No one who testified has seen the notion of perception affects value. Here are over two thousand people signing petition, think this is a bad thing. Sounds like a lot of negative perception. The question is, do you rely on Black Box study? Black Box study is something you can do, look at it and analyze. Bruce mentioned that he could not duplicate the handle for because of leaked data. But Cam provided it to the company sale he used. Unlike the Black Box analysis we did see later, and Mr. Lewis submitted was Black Box. But no one's ever seen the data. Bruce says that Cam was wrong, but never can ask the truth, I'm sorry. Why? No, he can't, ask the doctor, as he says, do you, never ask. Mr. Blazer again takes this opportunity to complain about the flaming sales arguments, and the answer on the sales was after the wind turbines were in operation, and Blazer says they were not in operation until three months later. So they were not in operation. Pretty easy to see why you might enter your operation, or create easy to see how the fact that the wind turbines are steering the product toward a base of lower value. That sure as heck won't hurt you. Right, so to Mike Bruce, on there's Macan's report, we found a ton of air suspicious. Say it's, it's, it's the, it's not exactly science. And it has decent data implementations into the data they were proceeding, as we saw in both Bruce's and Macan's consternation. And I sure as heck don't think that Black Box is hurting your life. No way. However, Bruce argues, I mean, Bruce refreshed that Cam's report is not complying with USPAP. He doesn't mention the data report, we stabilize from heavily on. Doesn't come close to complying with USPAP, but doesn't get tried. Bruce complained from the candidate not inside the homes, and didn't across the board justice. And then he admitted that's exactly what Cam did. Exactly. Bruce then tried to analogize a one single wind turbine by an Harvard committee college. What we have in front of us here. Doesn't take a lot of time, it's still those two words. That's a stretch. Talked about the assessor, Lexington County. Says that he lived point seven five miles from one, and he heard, no big deal, he's heard. Point seven five miles is thirty-nine hundred feet. Even at seven point seven five miles, we didn't know why we were. We have sixteen hundred feet here, not thirty-nine hundred feet. Sixteen hundred feet. They were lands last night in the recent report about the assessors. Found, didn't find, didn't notice, didn't let them get. But we also know that the assessor's office is part of the government. It's paid by government tax dollars. And it's a year ago, it's too much. So we're going to tell the tax office. Finally, Mr. Bruce said the reports of several large acreage farms in the areas of wind turbine properties, but the one he showed us was part of industrial use and semi-zone. And semi-zone. I wonder the wind turbine about? We are about eleven developments in eighteen counties near wind turbines. Don't know how close those were to wind turbines, don't know how big farms were, don't know any. Don't know decimal levels or nothing. What we do know is that's less than one per, one per county over an eight year plus period. Eighteen counties, eleven developments. That might as well be noted. Big question to take is, there's only one tax, we talked about that. The cost of the tax deal, it's just, there's no benefit, not even have a small. I mean, my taxes up there are so much higher than what you are, and I don't, it's not a benefit to me. Not a lawyer. Imagine if you had to pay a lawyer, go pay a razor. That's why, you know, we don't know how many tax deals are done on a reserve basis in any of these counties. Round farms, they're all commercial. It looks like we need to make money out of things. Big question related to Mr. Bruce is why he was not asking you a pop up or something? He's done it for me, he admitted. Why not? This could read to the shutdown, Mr. Bruce. Mr. Blazer knew that this was his work for me. But he didn't ask to do one thing, but really, really, very short. Crop dusting, crop dusting. Baker is not going here, your application charges more than wind turbine dogs, we know that. We heard his dad still talk about it. Some places only accessible can pay a surcharge, some places won't be able to be crop dusted. We got fifty percent bargain, or two percent, or two dollars and five dollars per baker, increased after fee. And then we have the I A A, email exchange. Sorry, triple A's, three A's. Pleasant Ridge two twenty-nine, and ask, Megan's over the six. This is Megan's over the six. His manager said, I A A A has no concerns. I, I, or I A A A says, any test or year exhibits, enter the evidence that this mediation demonstrates acceptance of Pleasant Ridge wind energy program is misleading and false. Misreading and false. Next page. This is near resolution. Wind turbine generator harms, wind turbine generator harms earth. Create neatly, create, create neatly as this, or harms, that's it. Create neatly as this unacceptable dangerous and hazardous finding and social merit that you may ground. Standards reach apply human health, didn't take the burden. I'll be honest with you, I don't know what causes these problems. None of this do. What we do know is people are complaining the problems, and they're real, they're not baiting their law. They're not a baiting their law because they're made up. Here's what Mr. Roberts and Mr. Dr. Roberts and Dr. Roberson know for sure. Some people complain sleeplessness, agrees that it's possible that a person's sleeping, obstructing, could be harmful to their health. And just because you can't find rejectable proof to complain, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. There's need for more research, nothing has been proven in any way. Sleep is essential to the restoration of health of a person's wellbeing. We know wind turbines disrupt sleep. We know it's essential for a person's wellbeing, and we know disruption of sleep is known to be associated with hypertension, cardiovascular, coronary disease, and parent of the immune system. Elevated to us, report is unknown, is retention, memory deficit, depression, mood, and type of activity that they report. The Massachusetts report, we can hear so much about, Elmo and Mom says, wind turbines can cause sleep disruption. We know sleep disruption causes these problems. How this thing is going, God, no one knows. Cambridge Water runs as close as anyone's ever determined. It's some form of sensation, it causes something. But the placebo effect makes no sense. We have kids feeling it, we have no conversation. We have Cambridge Water when they don't know if they're not wrong. But they're feeling it. And we're talking about Cambridge Water, and the manager's complaining about Cambridge Water in a second. We don't know what it is, we don't know what the pathway is, but we know it's occurring. Oh, and Roberts across, let's talk about that in a second. This was actually questions by Mr. Hayes. And three seventy-five, or three seven six five to sixty-six. Mr. Hayes asks, other state individuals that no disease has ever been shown to be caused by wind turbines, correct? Answer, I said there's no recognizance disease associated with wind turbines. No recognized disease. I don't know, never. But there is, it is mine. Cause he reduced, answer that question number time and time again. He didn't go, so kind of summary, even though turbines have never been shown to cause disease, doesn't mean that they're necessarily completely safe and harmless. As far as a person's health goes, answer. Epidemiology and science cannot prove the negative that. And so there you know, it's not causing disease, it's not causing condition, but condition can prove it doesn't. But he never says no. He never goes out and says, answers these questions. If you go through the test, it gets you a plea, but these kinds of direct questions and these kinds of, it's not answered. Okay, let's talk about. Punch, oh gosh. He came here to tell the truth. The guy couldn't have been more honest than today. He tried to be honest, he tried to tell the truth. Instead, he gets beat up. Two hours about qualifications, and nothing, then he had to come back and get beat up about little words, but that's what they did. He's killed a message. He says, effects of annoyance may include physiological responses, central nervous system reaction, and biochemical changes, physiological reactions to sound and annoyance, including increased heart rate, increased blood pressure, possibly weight, diabetes. Pretty similar to what Robertson and Elmo said. We also have this annoyance for wind turbines. Again, this is in chart, it's very similar to the one that Avery showed. We got anywhere from five percent, twenty percent, nine percent to thirty percent. We then go on, he refers to some studies, wind turbine noise. Annoyance was found to be statistically related to measure long-term cortisol levels, we talk about cortisol, that's a big issue. As much as they want to say it's not, it is a big issue. We also heard that, well, you know, you were true to your duties before. And it was two seven, two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. Wind turbines in this country are very conceived. Here's more studies, most of which after two thousand and nine. That our same sleep service is the most well documented. We all agree on that. Then we had more studies from two thousand and nine closely, I mean, there's some before, but I have it after two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight. Research indicating sleep disturbance and quality of life don't always work. They get ready to see it now. We have sleep service. I don't know what it costs, I don't know if it's disease, I don't know what it is, but it's the service that bothers people in extra lives. It's a help for these people. That have not asked, and have just come to them. Nobody, now Elmo and Robert's dispute that wind turbine infrastructure, that infrastructure causes the kinds of problems that happens with that. Dr. Funch said, then approved that wind turbines do cause specific symptoms. How is the evidence trying to conduct the study, Mr. Scholz? Question issues that revolve with the study type of noise levels below point five. That's, the study's not about noise. It's about the effects of wind turbines. And she will soon show the letters that is the issue. Some people get headaches when there's no wind turbine. And it's the second. I get headaches. I don't blame it, it's a wind turbine. But there are times when you feel something, when you feel a sensation, whatever that sensation is, anything corresponds into certain parts of the wind turbines. This was done by an independent acoustician, actually hired by the wind company. First time, maybe the last, now. The independent acoustician is going to give access to all the information that the wind company acoustician has. This is transparent. Unlike LBNL. Let's talk about Dr. Scholz. Dr. Scholz was hired by an energy, in Howard, and yes, Mr. Roberts suggested. But then he was hired by an energy worker on this project. This project. Mr. Blazer, when you had to play this, comes in for an anti-wind, but there's no evidence for that mystery. And if he was such an anti-wind, then why didn't the energy hire him for this project? More importantly, why couldn't he here to testify? He's very reputable for working in it. Says more to hear better than acoustician. Standards director of the Acoustician Society in America. Let's see what he has to say about Cambridge Water. I highlighted, and you know what, and I'm not going to read it all, but it's empty. It is, this is a wonderful study from an acoustician that is well respected according to them. Hired by an energy. They didn't want him here to talk about this. Up until now, wind farm operators have said there are no known positive effect relation, wind farm emissions responsible for living in this state. The wind farm operators simply, simply cannot say that there is no known effects, and no known people affected. We heard about a number of people who felt something to the wind turbines, I'm just going to name their names. Because I don't want to spend a lot of time, margin Hall, Barbara Cook, Paula Kelson, the Bureau of Chaos, Ted Hart, Neville. They're sixteen hundred, sixty-five feet away from the wind turbine, and they came here to do nothing more than because he needs a better cable. Tried sleeping in the center's house, abandoned his home just to get back into the mansion. I don't like this. Number of people affected, we heard from a number of people, actually there's a hangar, we did a bunch of, there are a number of people affected. Somewhere between five percent, twenty percent, we don't really know. Five, five percent of the average of those hangars, so let's shoot this. Number of people within a mile of this wind turbine. Six times fifty-four residents, that's around. Let's say fifty people in a house, it's probably low, but let's say two thousand people. According to the study cited by Henderson, approximately five percent of people are affected, five percent, two thousand, that's a hundred people. We know that a hundred people are affected. Then numbers low, it's twenty percent, or four hundred people. Easy to agree with, it goes on to admit, advantage is easily agreed, says, audio flicker. Made, audio flicker made a noise, occurred, noise, vibration, air turbine, wake, those are all things that are there greatly in the danger. Shadow flicker, you know, of twenty right now. Everything's to the limit here. Thirty's the limit, let's go to twenty-nine. Forty-one's the limit, let's go to forty-one point four. Okay, now we're going to go to forty-one point one. Lots of talks about tax benefits in schools, he put those benefits, only one school district, which was, has almost no wind turbines today, cannot support this project. Here's from Cheryl Hartman. Illinois State Board of Education, a regional consultant told me that most school districts, the wind turbines actually end up in the same position. Very essential. While the window may pay four hundred forty-two thousand taxes, or two hundred eighty-eight thousand of that is in the market. One point three percent of the current. Driving thirty students, even if you attended, are looking out, or they're doing it less than seventy thousand dollars in new money per year. Seventy thousand. Either way, it is not the same, it's the name three dollars a week by close to the fish. Mr. Steiner PowerPoint showed the drop, or in energy, or dropping, that drop the A A B, lots of property owners will have another detriment of that, of tax revenues. By the end, it's all the streets, the other jacks, and batteries, they actually end up in the exact same position, State Board of Education person holds you in. Analysts. They had a wall, they wanted a penny, they had to go through a cross the line. Geese study, cortisol levels blew up, they can't eat. There's behavior changes, we heard Dr. Whitto talk about it, we heard Dr. Beat talk about it. Then they heard a research report raising livestock in this area. Nelson's here. Raises cash drugs. Keeps them in a very controlled environment. It's very vulnerable, straps. It's a very vulnerable stress, asshole. Effectively a small percentage of the Indian economy's business. This is a company who spent 1.3 million dollars in lipstick companies. These are the people we're going to hurt? Or we guess. And said, and said the same thing. Dogs are touching. Talking about inefficiency and overhyped on life on style. Peter Dolby. Has a reproductive cattle farm, seven wind turbines with a half ton. Just built a new barn, new stress on cattle, it was stressed. Noise by lights and shadow caused stress to cattle. He's seen it every day. Those things that are already here, noise, red lights, shadow. And stress means poor performance in cattle. We heard from two fans that supported this farm. Heard from a bunch of them, but what's, I thought most of the rest of the earth, two people who actually signed the name is. John Slagle. And they signed, they came in here and testified against this end recipe. Contract said they had to support this project. And came in here and did the exact opposite. The exact opposite. Why? Because it was too important to them to let it go. And Mr. Slagle said, "He went to this for millions of dollars to run a child." That's what we all have to think about. One child. I don't know about you. For I'll give you every dime I ever gave. Still my child is home. Every dime. I don't think they could be holding it up with this, but I'll tell you what, I ain't taking the chance. Any grown township, life official, X-ray, 4,000 foot setback, any word in this question, either township. She'll tell you something. Application guidelines, and this will be allowed. Consistent with our respects for the landowners' plan, Mr. Blais was closing on this topic consistently, two things. Again, that aggravated a regional plan question. And relying on a board to testify by his plan. While we agreed this plan, maybe the financial year won't be as clear, she's not a landlord. And as much business talking about land planning, as I am, we talk even fewer about that farm. Never testified before it was a land planner or a compliance with zoning ordinance. This plan's testimony's reported, it should be given, no way it is consistent and consistent with what your plan commission found. This plan never heard of the sound factors. That's like the Bible, those special uses and ordinance variations in zoning, what sound factors? Never heard of them. Nor was she aware of the special use standards that we're going through here, which is becoming ordinance. Regional plan commission, oh my gosh. Trust me, I don't want to do that job. Not here when the wind energy companies know. My closing last night, I did not spend any time under deliberation, but I think after the ripping of that last night, it's only fair to point out that there is significant parts of the act. One must remember, first of all, these are just myths, not proven transcripts. These myths should not be relied upon as anything more than a show of some. However, here's what they say, "The severity of 2014's zoning warrant, but here, deals here in transcript, question of the ad-land's expert was pointed out." Yeah, she hasn't got a land plan in her life, okay? Goes on to say, "Stan-Tac, the argument of open spaces issue dimension in addition to wildlife dimensions. Mrs. Woodburn expressed her concerns about this impact statement when she compared this information with information provided in the I D N report regarding this case." Discussion limits, end of section 4.1 on page 42 of the town plan. And then it goes on to describe that discussion on all reasonable things. Residential laws, the town plan's claim a mention, and how the laws go, it might have an effect on residential development and property values. The planning commission's discussion of this application, in times of lack of health, safety, welfare, and general advantage of the application. That sounds to me like people were taking their job seriously. Job that they did better, they probably not. To say that the plan commission came up with this because of this regulation or this finding, because there were people that were against this project, it's really not how to say these people are not doing their duty. That is so proper to say about people who are giving their time back to this community. I could go through the town plan language, you know it, you see it. This is not the town plan's plan, the regional plan commission is correct. And here is their finding. Doc, compliance. With the Lexington County Town Plan Committee. Public safety, safety is recovered, standard three, Roman I, twelve. Guideline three, conflicted with the standard one law. Guideline four, already obviously dealt with this one going along with standards. Five, almost identical to the standard three double Y, three Roman I, two again. Okay, guideline six. Well, not in fair work, the growth improvement surrounding properties. No evidence by the advocate, only evidence is Mary Cole. He said it was okay with his board, but it's changed for hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's people. I don't know what that does to their growth, it's starting to drop, because I know based on coffers in that town, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Then they go rely on this installation form, one should not qualify to write or testify about some, there's no evidence that it's earned on this issue. On the other hand, we heard many people said they would walk, they would not have bought homes or moved property if they knew or know what they know now, the home to a land. Maybe they have some, no women, it's like D and B, it's either over. Then we have the issue of property values, we have the loss of the rights, we also have the issue of 2,000 plus signatures. When two people send, send bags, they're not interested. 2,000 people were concerned about whether this will affect their way of life and their ability to improve their progress. Guideline seven, adequate utilities. Stormwater, stormwater conservation history study recommended shipping wind turbines from areas of concentrated flows. Nothing was done in that regard, and if they do, now we have different noise levels that we don't know about. Now we're back at it again. Also, they wanted to give them the time to take to become all the operations and revise operations. That's what they say, not what I say. This project has been ongoing for years. Why didn't they write? And allow them to understand all the ramifications. Oh, I know, we all know that, there's a time for that. They're worried about changes to the ordinance, and they're trying to get in. That's why it isn't here, that's why you got half the information you need. They failed, and now they want to place the risk of the Lexington Carolinas residents. Drain tiles. Project total's board is not aware of procedures in place to develop check the drain tiles. It appears that it may be some procedures in place to check the drain tiles, and we'll admit when we're not. Problem is, what happens if they're crushed? As we know, drain tiles are hugely important, we're concerned, this is a huge challenge for the people in this audience, the people in this county, who rely on water. Question is the biggest problem, some of these drains are legal for 100 years. These were the same surgeries by the local prairie drainage history. The damage may have been found for years, it could cause some problems. It's a cross. How much will that cost the neighborhood farms that are not involved in this? It's probably over that grade, over 900,000 pounds. We heard some process evaluation about triax, how much actual weight maybe versus trucks per inch. However, like in many things in this case, there was actually no evidence to support that cross examination. All we know for sure is there are 900,000 pound cranes tracing through an old drainage channel, and we're supposed to believe that one could crush. Well, Slagle had testified. He lives in a wind farm. He found growing tar, tar cloud, whatever. Didn't find, it's all problems already occurred. He also had compassion slows against it, and damage to the property. Had, has five hours wished that he didn't ever have it for him, and he's getting the money. Little or no evidence by advocate, by the advocate, to prove that they're not scared. Been my strategy congestion, again, no evidence by advocates, never approved. They're lying, Mr. Lenz's testimony says this issue was resolved. I think the call mat, I went back to this, to that point, back to the point, and looked at the transcript. Mr. Lenz's entire testimony was that negotiations are non-negotiable, and that the commissioners are not taking any position. Doesn't sound like they would talk like anybody. All they say in the application is the road said, the section says deals are public rules. The section does not address position, it just says they will comply with county requirements or restrictions. That's clearly not what's played by the ordinance as a means in minimizing traffic congestion. It's not a plan, it's a point. Advocate burdened leave this in the table. Heard a lot of press for his testimony. Which truly available threat allegation because she passed others. It's really obvious. Just because she passed other ones, doesn't mean you have to pass this one, a legal or a moral standpoint. In fact, the opposite is true, if anybody tells you about differently, they're wrong. I've been a missile lawyer for 25 years, that is not the same. You look at each one of these on their own with a new eyesight. There is no precedent, you can't get old base into the new base. It's not relevant. You have to meet the standards or you don't. And each wind farm is different, each development is different. This one does meet the standards, you just heard 15 ways why they don't meet the standards. Don't evolve into this. You have different acreage, you have different evidence, you have new evidence that's occurred. That was not available to you in 2009. I'm sorry, but the world has changed. In 2009, in the 1960s, no one knew cigarettes caused problems. We heard from the cigarette company, it's no big deal. 50 years later, we know that. I'm not saying it's a creative cancer, okay, you know. But we learn more, we learn, we have new evidence. And the prior areas occurred, the relevancy of the wind turbines. New studies have been approved since, since they've been approved by, since there are new studies have occurred. T-bridge wanted to be one. Case law is clear that every year is looked at its own merits and its own facts. No case is ever held that you could dispute because you previously approved of the form. And I say, I'm not trying to tell you anything you don't know. I've never been, I've never been to a zoning area that took this, I've never been one to this amount of time, I haven't been, first of all. Because I've never been with a dispute of zoning area that did not have a way of handling that. Not with a dispute this large and this long a time intensive. And I hate to say it, neither one of us will. And please don't take that as anything other than just my experience. We know advantage has been in many suits in the past five years, eight years, we've put some evidence, and that's just what we did with the internet search about. I would just ask, if you rule, look at the evidence and rule with open mind, and then decide whether the advocate in this case would actually comply with the zoning ordinance and the standard set forth. I would submit to you, if you look at that, it would be a clearer result, and you know it. Judy Gep, the town commissioner, she dumped. Only on her first night of field. Those were two of the five. What was the ultimate bait and switch? Down to 126 people. How many issued the entire county? 2,168. We had, we had probably almost 70 people sign a petition against this thing. It's the whole county. Closest residence? Point six miles. The county's only 2,100 people, it's 40% larger than the Lexington county. That's the definition of desolate. That's where these things should go, I would agree. Judy Gep should be happy and be in a pink spot. Sorry, is that bad to put it? Yes, they should be. They think it's a tough way to handle the facts. The second decision, or a mile away. Again, we should consider it. Imagine representing that Rebecca Black affair that these projects carried in any part. I will tell you, this has been the most amazing experience I've ever had. I've ever seen. And I, I represent people throughout the city, pretty much a lot of people in every county in the state. And I have never been across the community like this. Don't let it be, don't let it be. I am so impressed with what you have here now. And my 25 years of litigation is only here, and I've never seen anything like it. Advantage says they want to build leaders community support for the project. Obviously not here. There is no community support. Not one resident testified this for this project, did not have a financial gain in wind turbines. And then only two officials. This tears community apart, and it's a fundamental issue here, it's going to tear, change what this community is, and I ask you not to change this community. I don't know how this is going. It's changing. I would ask you to look at the facts that are currently shared, and vote what the evidence clearly shows, and that is the advocate is not trying to prove. In particular, it's failure to prove that its plan to meet the only motion, joint board standards, in and of itself, as well as the lack of financial assurance. Those two things alone, or either one of those, is failing to this adaptation, and you cannot approve. Just those two things, done. And there's no doubt that that's correct. No doubt this is not. That they failed, and they were learned. That's before you even take into account the fact that there's significant health and financial risk to your constituents, who can no longer be in order. I've written about conditions, if you do do it, I can't even bring myself to talk about them. This project must be denied based on the law. And I really want to thank you. And I apologize to have taken longer, I hope to, but it was a lager, so. Thank you very much for your time, and I want to thank everybody, over the most thanks for the unbelievable time, I've never enjoyed this time, thank you.
Just want to take this opportunity to tell everybody, I'm sorry I wasn't here earlier. Had something come up, wasn't able to be here until now. Councils let me know that everybody needs 10 minutes worth, 10 minutes worth of reading, so why don't we go ahead and take 10 minutes right now, and we'll come back and keep going here. I'm going to call names, we're going to, I'm going to call until I get, well, I'll call everybody on the list. And we'll have that person, the first one we find who wants to give a closing statement, we'll have them come up to the podium. And then I'll continue calling until yet another person that's interested will have them in the on deck chair here, so that we work through this, all right? All right? Before we get going with the 39 meetings, I just want to be certain that there are no units of local government or school districts with a representative that would like to give a closing statement. Is there a school board tonight? All right, school board today? Understand.
That's why we take a lot of meetings, because we're hearing.
Go ahead and get started on our list. Mark Aberley. Mark Aberley. All right? Come on up to the podium. Brian Bell. Brian Bell. Suzanne Bell. Suzanne Bell. Wibby Bell. Dan Meek. David Blue Garden. Karen Brandon. Roger Brown. Tom Rucker. George Bush. Judy Campbell. And Bureau of Calasis. All right, come on up to the chair. For all you want. Mr. Aberley, maybe.
Everything that I was trying to say is already said, but I guess this is my only chances. I'm really good. The green energy, I've been all for it. And I'm enough that where I live, I can give it my own. Did a lot of the same things, I saw, like the wind farm. I went home and did a lot of the same things I saw, like the windbar property, I dug the ground. Did a lot of trenching, it was boring, but the only difference, one thing I did. I did not offend or disappoint any of my neighbors. Not one. And I'm sure that's more. And I think it's very important. As far as my fears, we've talked, we've heard so much about. The decommission cost. I don't know how we put a price on it by a minute. I just don't know how we figure that. We're all going to live with each other after this is over. We're not going to live with these.
Mr. Everly, thank you. All right, Ambiro, if you can just hold here on three off of two of your names. And I do want to remind everybody that I do have a timer going for two minutes up here. Leslie Shinard. Come on up to the chair. Ambiro, you may begin.
I ask the CBA, Livingston County Board, and the actual committee to take a step back. Think of the tremendous amount of work and effort put forth by your constituents. Before these hearings, most of us were ignorant to any negative associated with wind turbines. During these last seven months, we have learned more about inventory and their efforts to surround us with wind turbines than the last seven to nine years they claimed had been openly working in the public. We've learned of environmental damage and consideration, wildlife death and destruction. Violation of Illinois noise pollution laws. Proof of negative health impacts. Significant drops in property values associated with close proximity to wind turbines. Home abandoned in the less seen and less. Wind energy companies will always deny these facts. It's our duty as mothers, fathers, grandmothers, grandfathers, friends, neighbors, CBA members, county board members to see through the denial, the objections, and all of the efforts to suppress the truth. And look deeply and thoroughly into all the information that has been presented to us, as I'm sure most of us have. This is in order to protect those who are unaware or unable to do for themselves such as our children, grandchildren, and future generations that do not have a chance with our efforts here and now. This is a plea for help. Please vote against this application and any future application from any company that looks only to benefit at someone else's expense. I believe most people who signed contracts with wind energy companies were not absorbed in after learning all the information brought to light by so many concerned citizens. Some of these citizens are not even from our own county. I plead you, heed your warnings. I thank you all for your kindness and patience through these lengthy hearings.
All right, if you can just hold on for a second, Leslie. Barbara Cook. Dwayne, oh, sorry. Come on up to the chair. If you can state your name for us for the court reporter.
Leslie Shinard, C-H-O-U, I think, and her name. After speaking with Lynda Rose, a friend and former teacher who visited by the state in the Zoning Board's appeals. Over 2,000 residents in Pleasant Ridge have spoken clearly and self-exponentially. And they do not want this eventual turbine complex to be approved. Mr. Blazer mentioned that events nice people from his area. Please do not mistake civility as lack of resolve. We are adamant that we do not want to lose the homes and lifestyle we have worked to create. I saw where Relay Energy has come back to the local county board to see what the company can do to change their mind after the county board did not approve Relay's wind proposal. When there's millions of taxpayer dollars at stake, these companies just be coming back to help you. The citizens want to make it clear that there is nothing that energy can do to make this project right for this area. My family's farm, as my mother-in-law told you, is the oldest farm in this county. Our family raises air vegetables and is an educational center for children and adults alike. Turbines of horizon destroy the historical significance of the area that we are trying to preserve and cast on. Energy is an industry that cannot stand on its own and compete in the marketplace. The wind energy endeavor is wrong on so many levels. For the people of Pleasant Ridge area and for the people of this country who are being taxed to death. We thank the Zoning Board of Appeals for the numerous hours they have put in listening to testimony. We hope and pray that you have heard us and our efforts to have presented the new information. Looking down the road, if the vote by the Livingston County Board is anything but 24 to 0, then they are not listening to the people and they are running their own agenda. If anyone approved votes to approve this proposal, then they, like some federal government, feel that they know what's better for us than we do. Thank you.
Dwayne Earl. Julie Fosdick. Julie Fosdick. Larry Fosdick. Henry Galvez. Sue Gero. G-E-R-O, Sue Gero. Jim Dilfer. Donald Harms. Patrick Harms. Ed R. Key. John Hayes. All right, Miss Cook, you may begin. Please state your name for the record. Go ahead.
Barbara Cook. This has been a long throw. And it's time for finally getting here again in the turn. Once again, I'd like to bring up how the turbines affect the making of physical man. I was diagnosed with vertigo and they have visual effects on me as they do other people that I know. It's the spinning motion, the stroller effect, the glaze. And I can kind of compare that, if you think of the optical vision diagrams with the black and white circles and they spin and they move when they need spin also in songs with the turbines. I worry about other people who have other medical issues that might have families problems. Mr. Blazer stated a lot of people that had medical issues at the end of a study that they had been diagnosed with previously. Once again, I'm concerned about how these turbines affect people that have these medical issues. The turbines do not create vertigo in me, but they do affect animals. I don't think they're safe. I don't think there's enough evidence out there, enough studies. The biologist didn't study stuff. There weren't enough studies about animals. He may comment, a new vet who had animals and lived by a turbine. Yet this biology, biologist also failed to even say anything about the hundreds of birds, thousands of birds that fly by my house and and stay over during our migration time was thoroughly false. Where I live, my lake, this is a happy place for me. I've been there for 25 years. The memories, the lake kind of has a life. It's almost to me, it's almost like an old friend. The memories of presents to my mom and dad and other family members and friends that no longer live here are everywhere I look. The trees, the wood.
Miss Cook, Miss Cook, I'm going to stop here. All right, I'm sorry, two minutes, that's what we did. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Cheryl Loughman. Nancy Alforday. Brent Johnston. Matthew Kyzner. Robert Lentz. Rick Miller. Do you want to work your way up to the chair? Mr. Hayes, may he begin.
John Hayes. What are the benefits of this windbar? Does it provide recreational activities for our children? Why is it supposed to help them have picnics or like a park or something or walk and sit under the turbines? Well, the only thing that I can see that, that's only positive that would be money, money, money. And it seems that inventory is stirring that ass. And inventory is carrying on one of the human problems of greed to get it into a yes vote. But what do the families of living in the most windbar desire? Well, hey, it's not money. Families just want life to continue as it exists now. The men, women, children, and other family members want to enjoy outdoor, perfect parties, unions, minarees, and many other activities on the quiet rural property. Please allow these, the residents of this part of the county to continue their current lifestyle. Simply put, what do you as a board members consider to be more important? Money? Or the families of Livingston County? I hope you will consider people to be more important than money. The length of these procedures should clearly tell the board that these turbines need to go to another location, somewhere where they're wanted by the people, someplace where they're better cited. I urge all of the county board members to vote no. Certainly, there's been given enough evidence to support that. In conclusion, I want to thank all of the members of the United Citizens of Livingston County for all the work and effort to stand up for the people in this area. And finally, my last thank you to all county board members for their service to the county.
Marshall Newhouse. Marshall Newhouse. Brian Olson. Brian Olson. Ron Cheaman. John Schlebel. Brad Steiger. Marvin Stidnott. Ruth Wessels. Ruth Wessels. Lance Gettner. Mr. Miller? You're it. Go ahead and.
Frank, I would just like to do a little takeoff from the sentence. Please don't do this to our lives. Here are a group of people who steadily come at most every meeting and express their opinion. And they're all saying, please don't do this to our lives. And when we look at the maps, the distribution, citing those things, it's just crazy. They're citing a long ways away from their owners and they're putting right close to the people who didn't sign contracts or prefer not to have those.
All right, that's everybody on the list. Is there anybody out there that I have often named, first time through, and maybe just want to come talk to us?
Mr. Chairman, I'm talking to a listener, Steve Canora, and I'm not sure if he's actually made it.
He excluded himself. Check it out on me.
I don't want to be late.
All right, tell me, tell me about your additional closing. If you got, what have you got? What are your thinking?
Well, I have no interest in people getting over here any longer than necessary. I'm thinking about 15 years.
About 15? All right.
Which is just the only guy who needs my name for coming?
No. Okay, just a few times. All right, let's say I'm going to set my, I am going to set my timer. All right, go ahead.
Just a few times. Patrick Engineering confirmed Ankar's monumental results. They confirmed that it applied within IPCD regulations. Even when they add in ambient noise, which is not what the regulations call for. Phil mentioned Watanabe's testimony in Wisconsin. He failed to mention that Watanabe's testimony in Wisconsin was rejected by the Wisconsin Public Service Committee. Instead, they accepted Ankar's testimony and granted that firm. So why does Patrick Engineering confirm that we meet the regulations? First and foremost, Patrick Engineering is certainly not pro-wind. Let's not forget, still is their lawyer. But here's what they confirmed. First, UCLC exhibit 154, one of their own exhibits. This is a discussion of the pollution control board issued right after they adopted the noise regulations. First, what is a property line noise standard? This Houston, Houston about the next question you asked, repeat. Actually, I, the IPCD knows. No person shall emit beyond the boundaries of his property. That's a property line noise standard. The board pursuant to the procedures prescribed in Title VII of the SAAP may adopt regulations prescribing limitations on noise emissions beyond the boundaries of the property. The classification of land is dependent on the actual use being made of the land rather than the anticipated or planned use such as could occur if the classification will base the kinds of. The sound pressure levels, this answers your other question. The sound pressure levels must be measured within the receiving property. But not closer than 25 feet to the property line noise source. This represents a significant departure from the original protocol which measured sound pressure levels at the emitter's property line. Since the regulation is intended to protect people from noise pollution, it is appropriate to measure the levels on the receiving property, not at the property. Another one of UCLC's exhibits, the LDCS tables. Phil read you just one portion of it. I'm going to read you a few more. First, similarly, residential uses in single-family dwellings, multifamily structures, manufactured houses, or any other type of building would all be classified as residential activity. Individually owned residences as well as residences owned by rental or management companies are included. Establishments in this category include apartments, condominiums, mobile homes, townhouses, etc. The vast majority of residential uses fall in this category. Use this category as the default for quickly coding large residential areas. That's code at 1100 private household, which is the one that's adopted by the pollution control board regulations. Structured codes under 1100, single-family buildings, detached units, attached units, duplex structures, row houses, accessory units, townhouses, manufactured housing. What's included in non, let's say, in non-residential, sheds, farm buildings, or agricultural facilities. I mentioned accessory uses. That's one of the things they talk about as part of residential. And they find, they define accessory units. Use this category for an accessory unit, which is structurally separate and distinct from the main structure. An accessory unit is a second dwelling unit, structure-wise, that is added to an existing lot for use as a complete and independent facility. For accessory use in that structure that is part of the main structure, that is meant for primary use. Classification options vary. Such a unit is also known as a beranet land. Such a unit is also known as a peremptive. Definitely LDCS codes say that's why the measurements are limited to residential portion to the house, not anything surrounding the house. Everything around the house is unclassified and therefore no noise related to the house. We know that because the latest statement from the Illinois Pollution Council is from 2003 and it's the Knox case that we talked about earlier. We're just gonna read you a couple of things out of there. Phil focused on a shed, that's certainly not the main focus of the decision. The main focus of the decision is Mr. Knox testified that the duck pond has always been a getaway place where he likes to relax. The duck pond is stocked with fish and he feeds it daily. SLS, the particular household code provides that farm homes are also included under household units and should be identified separately from the remainder of the farm or the code of their agricultural. Specifically, an issue is the classification of the duck pond where the noise measurements were taken. The noise measurements of ponds and alleged vibrations were based, were taken at the duck pond and unclassified property. Since the duck pond is not a classified property, the alleged merid vibrations do not apply. According to the board finds, no merid vibrations as alleged in complaint. And one final thing. The complaints have not proven that the noise emissions from turbines' ventilation panels substantially and frequently interfere with their enjoyment of life. They have not shown that the noise in question is anything more than a minor, I guess. The noise in question was characterized as an aggravation by both complaints. Based on the evidence before, the board finds that noise emissions do not substantially and frequently interfere with the complaints' enjoyment of life and weighs this factor in favor of the respondents. That's the latest statement in relation to the pollution control. Phil mentioned John Vassell's testimony. Mr. Vassell testified about three particular species he's concerned about. And across the nation, it's not much that all three of those species have been excluded from any impact by this proposed project by the IDN. And pursuant to consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, we're already doing everything that the IDN has recommended, except for items that, as Mr. Vassell testified, would actually increase the risk to a dangerous species. I got it down here, it's over 52,000 acres still that the entire project's site, but as I mentioned yesterday, as the Sonoma Park Conservation District confirmed, out of that, we are actually only using less than one half of 1%, a total of 132 acres. Phil mentioned Nelson Zare and his confinement operation. He answered your question, this Houston, you may remember. What affects that? And he answered, weather changes. Phil said the only person who prepared a use path report was McCann. Actually, he didn't because we established that he didn't comply with the use path. First and foremost, because he's a lobbyist. Phil also said, in terms of what we talked about yesterday, none of Ridge's proof, but we'll don't pass it. We can't, don't pass it. You can't ignore the fabrications from McCann. Phil makes no mention of the fact that all of McCann's statements regarding 20-plus percent reductions in property values in Ontario were false, were fabricated. In terms of the missing wind farm, Phil says, well, it was really about the fact that there was an anticipation of the wind farm coming. That's not true. I told you yesterday. McCann said three separate times, it was the effect of the existing wind farm. And it wasn't that the wind farm wasn't operational when McCann claimed the effect occurred. It's that what, construction hadn't even begun and didn't begin until months later. As you all know, that wind farm didn't begin operating until December 22nd. Ten months after it, McCann said it's there. And one more thing about McCann. There was a mention about the cumulative days on market, marketing time, how long it takes to sell one of these, particularly in the Littleton County. This is what McCann said. Well, that's right, it's actually the target area and lead that was, the lead average, I'm gonna try no solipsy, only percentage of the data. The lead average was 635 days, cumulative days on market, and who's the rest there? Here's what he says about Livingston County. The Livingston MLS didn't let itself to backtrack in the prior listing. So all I really had was the most recent sale at the time, and that went through, you know, changes, changes in brokers, then you know, all it is, is the last listing. So he says, there's no information available in Livingston County for cumulative days on market. That was also a fabrication. Because thankfully, it's a tiny, it's a simple to learn. Alright, I think you said you're a member of the local board of realtors, is that correct? Correct. Alright, do you know what CDOM is? CDOM, you don't, uh, CDOM? Yeah. It's an abbreviation for something, I'm not exactly sure. Question, cumulative days on market, does that sound? Answer, we call it DOM, which is what our MLS system is, and we don't have to see, DOM, days on market. Question, and what do you mean by your MLS system? Answer, the Livingston County Board of Realtors typically presents it as DOM instead of CDO. Question, so for example, if an appraiser wanted to find DOM or CDO, whichever way you call it, the Livingston County MLS contains that information? Right. Answer, yes it does. 2,000 signatures on a petition. I was going to say that we don't know what was said to these people, but we actually do. It was what was said to the purpose of the school board and to the planning commission. It's what was said at that Tom Hall meeting last summer. And we know what the impact is of that, of exactly something like that being, that Tom Hall meeting. Pleasant Ridge exhibit 272, fomenting sickness, no seco-prime of residents about expected wind turbine health harms. It was the study that considered what the aftermath was of holding a public anti-wind meeting. In this paper, we present a case study of the apparent impact of an anti-wind farm public meeting on the generation of negative news media and the subsequent expression of concerns about anticipated health and noise effects to a planning authority approval period. We present a content analysis of the negative claim claims disseminated about health and noise in the news media and available on the internet prior to the hearing. In another content analysis, all submissions made to the planning authority by those posing the development application. The continued prominence of this issue with wind and reclining cases is linked not to legal utility, but more likely to the residents who receive negative information about health impacts of wind farms and its subsequent repetition through news media and in submissions. This effect is likely to reflect various price factors that characterize environmental threats and the greater propensity to cause outrage in communities. These include factors such as involuntary exposure, perceived inequable or unfair distribution of risk, industrial revenue natural risks, untrustworthy sources, and credit consequences. Crop dusters. Number one, 18 counties in this state with wind farms, are none of them getting crop duster services? One million properties in those 18 counties, are none of those getting crop duster services? Plus, a Ridge exhibit 23, which presented during Jacob Baker's testimony back in November, was a video of a crop duster dusting through a wind farm. And number three, Pleasant Ridge exhibit 229, the communication between the energy and Mr. Reeve at the IAA, and he expressed only one concern before a member of his community approached him. And the only concern he expressed was, can you mark the met tower in alternating stripes? That's what our flyers had a problem stating. And of course, we, not a single other concern was expressed. Talking about punch, Phil said qualifications that mean nothing and little words. Those qualifications that mean nothing and those little words show meant a whole lot to Kerry Schinolb, who was led to believe that he had wind turbine symptoms, when he really has obstructive speed at him and irregular heart problems. Phil said cortisol is a big issue. And a whole lot, a whole lot more studies have been conducted since 2009, since the last time we approved the wind farm, which was actually 2007. There had been a lot more studies. I agree with it, including, as I mentioned yesterday, the most extensive one ever conducted, published just in November of last year, the Health Canada Study, which completely rejected every single kind of health effects of the turbines. Phil called the Cape Bridge Water Study, a wonderful study, which proved sensation, improved sensation when the wind turbines were turned off. Imagine having been in many, many suits. Fifty-six projects over a 14-year history. And what did you hear from Rebecca Fair? One guy in R N, don't understand. One guy in 2010 in Wisconsin, don't know the status. Some folks in upstate New York, don't know the status. The comprehensive plane report, lights and spirits. Phil forgot to mention one thing. This is his cross to say. How did you take into account this section when you did your 16 points? Or did you? Answer. We did. We did an analysis of the actual amount of land that will be used for wind farm facilities versus the amount of agricultural and prime agricultural land that's within the project area. Question. And when you say we, who's we? Answer. Myself and the land use planner. Question. Who's your land use planner? The claims from, the claims and testimony from Mr. Cabazos and Ms. Kelson, I have to quote you again, Mr. Chairman. This was in a rule where you ruled that John Schlebel's efforts bring in his Facebook conversation with Kerry Schinolb would not be admitted in evidence. And here's the reason why. All right, so he can't self-diagnose with authority. Dr. Roberts said what leads to happen in the situation of this, that it's the same thing out in the middle of the country. If you think you have a problem, don't self-diagnose, don't go to the doctor, don't go to the doctor, find opportunity. And finally. New evidence that was not available in 2009. You're right, Pleasant Ridge exhibit 100. Pursuant to your request, the intent of this letter is to discuss complaints that Screer Community Ridge Wind Power LLC has received regarding the Watergate South project. This is dated November 11th, 2014. After achieving the commercial operations, our records show that there were response signals, received fewer than 10 complaints regarding the project. One of the most common issues was related to potential interference with television reception. In each case, SCRS resolved the matter by adjusting the landlord's television services. One landlord also expressed concerns about selling the house during hearings in Livingston County relating to Peter Gold, a renewable, strategic, here by the project. In 2011, the landlord's house was successfully sold. Since March 2011, SCRS has not received any complaints about the project from residents in the project area. That's the information we have today. Thank you very much. I love you, Mr. God. We are fine.
Thank you. Twenty minutes, twenty seconds. We need to, the county will accept, we have an exhibit list, it's called Livingston County's owning water field group exhibit number one, is an entire list of all the exhibits that have been placed into evidence throughout this entire proceeding. It's step 13 on my list. The ZBA shall hold this hearing, we've all been waiting for that. So, at this time, we won't close any additional public comment, any comments by the applicant. And we will begin the deliberation process. We're not getting started that this evening, it's too late. So, our next meeting is scheduled for June 2nd.
Say 6:30.
Okay, the location.
To be determined.
The location is to be determined, verified on the website, and the timing at this point is 6:30. So, for those of you not familiar with the process, what will happen is, we have all the evidence at this point, we as a board will discuss the direction we feel this project needs to go, or whatever the case, and make a motion accordingly, and we'll vote on that. Realistically, we will probably discuss it for an evening. From that, we'll have an idea so that some findings, some facts, and decisions can be drafted accordingly. And then we'll probably come back yet to another meeting and actually vote on that. Now, we may deliberate, we may end up needing a couple nights to deliberate. Don't foresee that, but I, I don't know. So, with that, I need a motion to recess. Vincent makes the motion? Yeah, now I get a second. He for seven, it's all his favor. I close.